Mr. Flack, can you take the roll?
No, we're getting it through.
Here.
When the rest is.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. I make the motion to approve the June 29, 2023, July 7, 2023, and July 12, 2023 Board minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hatt. Any discussion? So Flack, can you call the roll?
Tom Hatt?
Aye.
Jen Berg?
Aye.
Louis Grasky?
Aye.
Linda Grassi?
Aye.
Scott Witten?
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to Special Reports. All right, we had put a request out for any role business. I didn't receive anything. All right, any new business tonight? I did not receive anything there also. No? All right. So that brings us to our Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. The first one is a superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison. At this time, we have not had a meeting. I look forward to working with Mr. Retino and whoever he identifies to be that kind of lead that effort. So hopefully more in the future here. That then brings us to Curriculum and Programming Committee and Alumni Association Liaison. Mr. Fishel?
Yeah, so on the alumni, on the golf outing, the Alumni Association made $2,556.40. So it was the second year, and it was better than the first. So moving forward and growing, so that's good. The date may be set for next year, but it's not announced yet. Maybe at the next meeting we'll get that date. And also, there is a Hall of Fame Committee Ceremony, October 14th, at the Holiday Inn on 306. And it'll be 5:30 until, and then it's $45 a person. And so that's the alumni update and report. For the curriculum, there was some discussion about the review of the Course of Study docs. And then also Cheryl gave us a little update on the Office of Learning and School Renting Miss Policy. And so there was, she gave a report on how we came out. And of course, all these pages are all the reports. And so we went over some of that and some of what it looks like going forward. So Cheryl's doing a good job of that. Melissa Malacar, our curriculum director, gave us an update on safe. So there is a requirement from the Ohio Department of Education and the Ohio Revised Code that says we have to have a safety program. And so that looks like it's going to follow the Sandy Hook program. It'll be one-hour sessions, three hours required each year. And there was some information given about that. So that's an update on curriculum. Yes?
I just wanted to, and this seems like an appropriate place to ask. I have not heard anything about the math Course of Study documents. So my proposal would be that we put them on the August agenda to approve, to board approve that. Would that be okay with everybody?
That would be great. I guess I should have. I should have looked more thoroughly at the agenda. I thought we might have an opportunity to talk about it, but I, they probably would have been better on the role business, and I didn't pursue it. So anyway, but I, for what it's worth, I went through. I liked what I saw, and I appreciate the work.
Okay, so my thought was that we would put the math ones on for approval, and then I would give you the access to the English Language Arts ones at that August meeting. And then we would approve those. Those then would be in your hands for review.
And if I could, I'll just take the soft copy next time, not hard copy.
Okay, and in addition to that, we did discuss that a little bit in our meeting. And my input was that it appeared that most of it was cookie cutter, almost identical from class to class. And so it was very consistent. And so moving forward, yes, I think that would be very acceptable and just move forward with that.
Okay, perfect. So expect to see that on August. The math, K-12 Courses of Study on the agenda for August. And then I will read the information so you can start reviewing at the end of August, into September, and I'll have a long lead to review the work of our faculty.
And just so everybody knows, it's an outline and a template of what's being taught in each of the classrooms.
Just to echo that, so previously, we had listed the different education standards that are required by the State of Ohio. We've got some information. But what I liked about it and appreciated about what we've done is it talks about so many additional readings, and it actually gives links to many of the online capabilities that we use. And so if you're a parent and you want to see what's going on and get a better sense, you probably get anywhere from what your child brings home from school. But this way, you know, you can go more in-depth looking into the future and things like that. So it really highlights what's going on and gives you an opportunity to dig deeper if you choose to.
Absolutely. And then they'll be posted on the website. So not only parents, but any community members that are wondering what happens here at Riverside, they'll be able to access those also.
Thank you for the update. And that was our goal, so that anyone even moving into the district can see what we were doing.
Great. That brings us to Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison. Mr. Hatt?
Sure. So we have a Buildings and Grounds meeting on July 17. Yeah, just a basic update. More or less routine things are going on. Summer clinging is happening at all the schools. We have a workforce of 12 summer students in addition to the full-time staff. So we've, you know, they've been able to get around and do a lot of good things in the buildings. And when we talk to the 17th, even though we still have over a month, it sounds like some of the, you know, good things are going on for the start of school towards the end of August. But we did some, you know, routine things like fire testing, looking at the extinguishers and things like that. The Spencer System at the Fieldhouse, Parkside, and River View were reviewed. Cleaning the grease traps, the timber boards at Riverside, the Fieldhouse, River View, and Parkside have been treated every year. They need a treatment so that they can last 15 years into the future. And we also talked about the Best of Field Project, which will add some security to many of the district's buildings, Riverside, LeMouth, Buckeye, and Melridge. That worked because it took so long, and I, are you going to talk about that more?
I haven't heard you say that in my life.
Okay, then I, that has been awarded. The contract is on the agenda, which will move under Buildings and Grounds. But Mr. Flack will talk more about that. And then probably the big thing that will be, you know, a new phase for Riverside will be the, you know, what we're going to do with the facilities. For people who are not, you know, have not been able to tune in, we did go with Vielowski, which is an accounting, not a county, an architectural firm in Cleveland. And they won the contract. And they are currently going to be looking at the campus, they're going to remove Melridge and Buckeye to start us out with. They actually are doing a report that's due on the 31st, which is Monday. And I don't know, you didn't address that as well?
No, I didn't address that.
Okay, now, anyway, I'm very excited to look at it, to see where we're at, and to actually have some traction in moving the facilities forward. So that is good. And Mrs. Grassi, did I miss anything from Buildings and Grounds?
I just had that we have TDA who's working on baseball field analysis.
Yeah, got it.
Since they were working on some other projects for us, they didn't have control of baseball fields.
And then in my other role as the, what is it? As the liaison, what am I? Legislative menu. So many of you have been following what, some of you may have been following what's went on. So we passed the budget, and you're probably going to talk about this to someone here or Dr. Kalis, but we had significant changes to what is going on with the Department of Education. And I'll just read this real quick, and there may be other comments that are made. But basically, what has happened is that the, in the budget, there was a basically House Bill 35. And what it did is it took many of the responsibilities of the Ohio Department of Education and created a new cabinet position under the governor called the Department of Education and Workforce. And so that's the person that will fill that role will have to be approved by the Ohio Senate and will then report to the governor. But most of the, many of the responsibilities the Ohio Board of Education, State Board of Education has will transition to that. There's a transition process that is underway. I don't know when exactly it will be done. But just to talk a little bit about the duties that the State Board of Education will retain are higher state superintendents, adopt requirements for education licensure, process and issue education licenses, investigate and resolve educator misconduct complaints, evaluate background checks, evaluate eligibility for licensure, determine school district territory transfer disputes, administer the teacher and school council evaluation system, oversee the Ohio Teacher of the Year Program, and interface with and provide staff to the educator standards. Pretty much all the other responsibilities are going to be under that new Department of Education and Workforce. There's not a whole lot of detail at this point, but obviously, this is a big change in our environment. So just so people are aware of that change. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. That brings us to Policy Committee and Booster Organization Liaison. Mr. Hatt?
So not a lot with that. We do have our second reading of the policies on the agenda today, so those will be approved. Booster organizations, I imagine all of our booster groups are getting ready, geared up for new school year. So we'll put all the update on that soon.
That's it. Thank you. All right, Superintendent's report.
You know, this is my last board meeting. 26 years ago, in the same room, I was hired as an assistant principal. And to be honest, I think that's been a career here. Not because I didn't like it, but only because, you know, it's uncommon for school administrators to stay in one place for a very long time. You know, school administrators are pretty transient people. I just wanted to thank the school board that hired me 16 years ago. That was Pam Johnson, the gally, Doris Moss, Mike Blair, one of Tom Tronwood, and our current board for allowing me to continue my leadership and ultimately retire me here. I want to thank Jen, Linda, Lori, Tom, and Scott. Especially Linda, Jen, Tom. We have served on this board for many years. We, we go back, we go way back, and we do some challenging times. But also, we have many opportunities for successes too. It's really appreciated. Serving on it's work, it's hard work. And I have witnessed the difficulty of the district and the students it serves. Serving under your leadership has been an honor. Thanks for giving me the opportunity for me to educate kids by their work. My effort wasn't the result of me working in the backroom either. I've been surrounded by big central office personnel. We have Debbie Patterson, Chuck, Melissa, Jill, Gary, Nick, and Mallory. And hardworking building administrators and directors, great teachers, and conscientious staff. The true success of the district can be summed up by its service to our students. And I believe we have the philosophy that philosophy. I'm sure it will continue under the helm of Dr. Retino. I have all competence in him, and I'm sure he will be good as well. I want to also point out, Sima Hony and Milo are here as well. I can't name anybody that I've worked with in the central office, but they're a big staff. And I'll finally, I want to acknowledge and thank my family. The life of the superintendent is very much the life of his or her spouse and family. And today, my wife is here. She was here 26 years ago, you know, I was hired here. Also intended for my children, Katie, Claire, and Zach. And if they bother you from during the home life of crazy schedules, late night activities, and other events, and stress again, maybe they have the script, or drive on the script. No longer, if you're going to call your wife, I need to see if they give you inside information on a snow day. I love you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
He said no hugs.
I agree, and I love hugs, too.
So I came this morning and did that.
Thank you, Jim. All right, we'll change to the Treasurers' report and Committee Update, so Mrs. Grassi.
Sure. So we had a finance and personnel meeting on July 20. The first thing that we talked about was the job fair that was very successful that we had on July 12. We had 46 applicants attend that job fair. And that we have, we still have a need for subs. And you can contact Mallory for any of the sub positions that we have available on our website. We are still also looking for some long-term subs, and we have a number of positions that are still open. We discussed that we will be having our new staff orientation on August 3. And so we'll be doing the annual bus tour of the district. Get ready for bus tour, Mark. We've also hired a transportation director who is coming from a teaching position in this district. So welcome to Kyle. We talked about some payroll vacancies that we have and some, you know, it's difficult to find people who are able to do payroll in a school district that experience. It's difficult to find, so we're looking for somebody there. I know that Gary has now been to the Painesville Township and Conquer Township trustee meetings to discuss the district. He's got Grand River scheduled on August 9, and Leroy is not scheduled yet, correct?
It is now, I think, the 21st.
Of August?
Mm-hmm.
We talked about some grant compliance. We talked about the tax exemption with the city of Mentor and Burke Stone Boulevard in Painesville. There are just some issues that go back and forth with that. We had an update on the state budget. And we did receive, at least at the committee level, a Board of Education calendar. So we have that. Two additional things that were not on our agenda we talked about were the tax advance that we received in July. I don't know if we received a second one since then, but we received approximately $10 million of our tax advance earlier in July. And we talked about the state requiring us to move to allow for cash ticket sales at athletic events. And we kind of had been kicking around some ideas on how we can accomplish that and keep internal control over cash. And so we'll get more information on that at a later date. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Great. An update from the Treasurer?
Great pleasure of taking Jim to through one more treasurer update. We're getting under 45 minutes. Hard to say that Jim has been the best superintendent I've looked under here at Riverside.
Such an athlete.
Did a little bit of jokes, so I just had to get one more time. So just a few updates. The OSBA Capitol Conference registration has opened up for this November 12th through 14th. So if you're planning on attending, I'll show you if you're registered. What the auditors want to assign to the delegate alternate for doing a business meeting. If you want to do our review of the other state platform, which might have been done early October, so if you're October, we can do a vote on the way out.
When do we have to designate that?
Next month's meeting, August. Also on tonight's agenda, we come in after the compliance meeting with the SRO cost, we're just coming here for two SROs. It's about $208,000 from the Sheriff's Office. It's been up 20.4% compared to last year because of salary increases that came from the Sheriff's Office. So I wanted to point out that we have about $35,000 increase in costs from last year to district-wide, to resource officers. The Vielowski assessments, they are waiting, they're ready to assume. I don't know if July 33, probably shortly after that, they're going to be getting some cost figures from us together. But they have scheduled the site work to walk through, or walk through Melridge, move through the high school campus. We've scheduled sort of home on, you know, the campus on August 7, 10, 15, and 16. And then Melridge on August 8 and August 9. Those are also, you know, schools starts on August 6. As Mrs. Grassi mentioned, if the contract with the baseball softball fields with TDA makes some studies, we could initial, we look at the industry, the TDA, how to talk to you, some pricing, what new fields look like, placing the levels if we were to pursue that in the future. You know, do things back from the beginning here as far as, we know that we've got costs to replace the entire field of grass, the entire turf, or chopping infield. Putting in the head, like if you did an anti-occult field or if it was a turf field, for that. It gets a higher highest cost estimate as far as, this is a field for cost, this is a defensive cost, which is quite a sense about supplies. We have those costs. We're kind of still having discussions for the final report that we're all having together, and we should, and facilities. Also on tonight's agenda is a used bus purchase. NYS schools has two special buses that they're selling. They're 2,017 buses. They have like a little tour, just, it was on 13,000 pieces. We're riding those two for them. We did make a purchase of five new buses back four or five months ago. They're still on the road, and that's stayed hidden until the end of April or so. So this is kind of stuff, game of nature, this system is more usable than what we had currently for $30,000. I spent, it seemed.
Did we have mechanics check them out?
Yes, they, they had a fairly low mileage, 60, 70,000 miles. Some of the buses come at $200,000. But they, they had, they, they invested this through the first act. So we actually, we still use them anyways, just because of the size. I don't really have much of a state budget update other than the app button plans, maybe. Probably one of the biggest changes, the formula, there's a different number under the older formula. We're not, we're, we run out of state sharing. That's what's called funding, it's like 21%. We just accomplish a little funding. We give, based on, how, how we take the funding based on property tax, well, under a new formula, we dropped to a 5% floor. All the money guaranteed, it's less than, you know. In the state budget, they increased that 5% floor to the 10% floor. According to the Legislative Service Commission's projections, they show us a vibrant dollar increase in funding per year. I don't know if I agree with those numbers. We're going to wait to see what the actual numbers come in. My opinion is just, we get closer to being out of formula, we're going to see if that changes. It wouldn't really net any additional, so we're going to see. But there might be other pieces in budget that maybe are probably known at this point that, you know, that's transportation budget. Resulting in increasing the cost of the, so that might, this kind of sounds confusing, but it's, it's, we'll have more to come. Usually, whenever the state budget goes in fact, it takes a couple of months to update the calculations. I'm assuming they're a little bit quicker this time because they're like changing major calculations. And this one is a little bit, assuming they're going to be right. And I last had a few slides to go through. Every July, we'll look at our financial results. Our history, so we're going to compare that to. Actually, I have the slides in the passes. So the first slide here is looking at our revenue. We're going to make five-year forecasts and we finalize them for the remainder of the year, we can at the June 30. And you can see a whole, you know, the first two lines, property tax revenue, public activity, personal property tax. Those figures are already known, basically, when we make the forecast. The reason for variance is Jock County sent us additional funds. They realized that the valuation variance in this, it's, it's, it's. There are about 100 parcels in Jock County, so we need some tax on the, on the chart. Unrestricted grants, we get our state funding. It came in 70,000 higher than what we anticipated. 25% variance. Everything else is pretty much in line, except for other financing sources, which includes cash rough costs, which came by base of lower than expected. But in total, they were 0.06% higher than what we were expecting. And the cash rough cost reimbursement, I wanted to kind of show that because that came in about 100,000 lower than we anticipated. And so what cash rough cost reimbursement is, is the reimbursement from the State of Ohio for special education students who have certain disabilities or certain thresholds, and to be basic, whatever student costs above a certain threshold, re-report that. And then they, it was reimbursement based on pools. They kind of pool whatever these school districts in the State of Ohio. And that's how the percentage is calculated, based on what they budgeted for that. So you can see like 2018, 1920, that percentage has been dropping in the refunding formula, the change debt. So last year's reimbursement was at 2021, you can see between 2022. So prior year was 47%. That percentage dropped 42%. And then our expenditures that we heard also dropped hundreds of thousands of dollars as a result of more than expected. That's a hard number to predict, it's continuing on. But every district and state of Ohio reported it. It doesn't change my budget unless we, if we were to. On the expenditure side, the salaries came about 136,000 higher than expected, 25%. 40,000 came in 155% lower. And you see kind of a lot of variance there. Camp Lotley is only 15 to 22% lower. That's only 25,000 on my, if you improve the funds, it's a real small change, maybe a 3%. So in total, our expenditures came in 0.24% higher than expected, 160,000. And that, all together, our cash costs is 23% lower. The next slide here just kind of shows, we look at our interest income. As you know, insurance is a lot of, adding, you can pass them to yourself. And so on the left-hand side, this year suspended and all the operating funding allocated, the interest stopped. The, 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 the interest, the social destruction funds are going to the, in our operations fund, 41,000. If you look at the 11-year history, it's 21 years. That's, I started in 2012, when the first division quarter has been adding to it, 11 years of history. Got more interest revenue this year than did last 11 years. I expect this company at this turn, considering the, 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 the industry is kind of steady at this point, that is a reason for it. So, so I owe, which we really have more of our money right now. I expect to say something similar to that. The next couple of slides is kind of the Best of Field Project. This is a project that we did out. We received the $400,000 of safety grant funds to grant the apply for store projects about $1.8 million. $400,000 to use in safety. to use in safety grant, we had a 1.4 million fund, we buy a permanent funding fund, and so this is, we look at industrial and other replacements at Riverside campus, New York School, what had Melrose, so here at the campus, we be building out, uh, through the front lotway, so this would include, uh, the left-hand side is, this side kind of show, these are from some other construction drives, there's some markings on it that may not be sensitive to that person, but essentially the left-hand side, the entrance, right-hand side, the security, the option will be, will be upfront, uh, there'll be a transaction window, car side review, video, uh, intercom system, and a little ramp, you come to it on the sidewalk, on the sidewalk, you see, out this sidewalk, you're just going to ramp up on both sides, and then you get a little ramp here, so it does kind of drop off, if you didn't notice, uh, two steps doors, they'll have the handicap buttons to open the doors when they're unlocked, doors not, when they're unlocked, so, you know, maybe doors don't want to replace them, they also include, uh, you don't see that here, but the door lock is doors may be replaced as well. At Leuth Mill School, there's not really a free, there's just a picture of the front entryway, so that we could replace the doors and the glass all the way up to the second door, basically same as it does now, but inside, this is the front entryway here, there'll be a second set of doors right here, so we'll create a best fuel, and then there'll be a, uh, a transaction window, and a door cutting the wall here to the interim office, just like the car side review, uh, and getting the school to come back out, and just the more, all, all we can place new, and also include is, on the next slide, uh, it's a 3D rendering of, of, we do the counters in there, so this kind of look like, this is the mention, you know, just, just, it's here, enter this door, this is about the reception system, sitting, and go back into the school, for visitors, very provided this missile door can open, and at one point, there, for, for, also including that project is replacing the doors, Kurt Lawson's home, at, we have the main hallway, and at the very back, like the handroom, he's out to, 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 those walls are replaced, uh, all the way to the second door, and also the door by the gymnasium, that whole section, there's a door, and we replace products project, um, right-hand set of doors, there'll be a handicap button there, so those doors will be operated, uh, especially, you know, correction, and, you know, protection, and, uh, there's the, uh, accessory. Uh, this is Buckeye, a 3D rendering, so Buckeye, they're going to tear down the, the overhang there, that's really poor shape, it actually creates a long way towards the building, they should, uh, inside Buckeye, there's water damage inside on the, on the, so it'll be two sets of doors, that again, it's basically going to close the front body, so the next slide here, this is the front door, they basically put us, all on doors, this side, this gymnasium up here, the side door is down here, this is the hallway, classrooms, this is the main office area, so this door will be locked, the transaction window, this is currently the principal sits, uh, this will be opened up, the reception area, the principal's office will be closed on the other side, so visitors can come in, the best rule, they come into office, uh, the bus they come in, the school features there, or, it's qualified later, this time, the car side review. And then also including that is, like here, like, they basically kind of cross the hall from the gym on the backside, the set of doors, the playground, that will be replaced, at the left-hand side, the, the, the doors that are there, back doors, the, the, all replaced, and then the 94 edition, those, those three sets of doors there, those were, which also will be replaced, all the doors are even one, on the date, and all the body, you're right, Melrose, this is kind of the front doors, basically, they, they, they should , they should, the doors will be right, to the left-hand side, there'll be a security office, um, so basically, this is the front entryway, come in, the security office to the left, uh, the transaction window as well, and this goes to the main hallway, at one point, we had talked about, uh, using one of the classrooms, including the office across the hall, and this was a more cost-effective option, especially since we, you know, we don't know the true future of this facility, we, 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 uh, we was going to, this way now, they have the officer, they can be in this, they can also, if we're not here, the, the, uh, intercom system also provides the office, so also they can see that door and, 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 and also that project include, uh, the best quarters, 94 editions of all the, all those security doors, Melrose, Buckeye, and, 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 we split off the project in April, we came over budget, we adjusted some things, we did in May, uh, we had some scope review, and this, that type of price responsibility, and they came in, um, which probably are now alive, it's pretty kind of, our goal was originally, we'd provide it this summer, obviously, pretty kind of, now, that's not possible, so we completed next summer, we're going to see if there's any way we can get some of this work done throughout the school year, how, just striking back here, I, I, the school, or not, $500,000 to both, be able to get some of that, the school, the cost, if you have some long, you can remember eight, but if you pull, just, there, this, that, 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 thank you.
All right, that brings us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the board president. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone like for a statement?
Yes.
I don't know if this is old information, I missed last week, last month's meeting due to vacation, but, uh, back in June, uh, Tom Angelucci, who's a junior, and also a pitcher on the Riverside Varsity Baseball Team, along with his troop, Troop 68 from First Congregational Church, uh, succeeded in completing his Eagle Scout project here on this campus by placing 26 tons of crushed, uh, brick onto the varsity baseball field. I don't know if any of you were aware of that, or had a chance to take a look at it, they worked along with Mr. R. Lessick and, uh, Matt Webster, the, uh, scout master, and also Kevin Wirek, who's the assistant scout master, Kevin's also a football coach of the seventh grade team. I want to congratulate Tom's effort, as a 17-year-old boy, uh, just turned 17, I might add, um, he managed to raise thousands of dollars and marshal the efforts of, of his entire scout troop to do that improvement to the baseball field. Um, also want to shout out to Mr. R. Lessick and thank him, school's looking great, it's amazing to see how much work you guys get done in the summertime, and, uh, it's just looking great, I just want to say I appreciate that. And then finally, Mr. Kalas, I wanted to thank you personally for all your hard work and effort, but especially for the times that you've reached out and helped my family, particularly in my sons, I'll always be indebted to you for that, thank you, sir, for your service. And Mr. Rotino, the White's family put all our support behind you and wish you the very best in your career here, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes.
Well, John, you said, James, I just want to say one thing, I want to ask the board to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, as just the tax, as you know, the taxpayer's got to be good stewards of their dollars, because that is their property, and you know, a good steward is being responsible for something that is not theirs, so I want you to be good stewards of the taxpayers, and I want you to be Riverside School District to be concentrated on teaching our children the three Rs. I've talked to many seniors this year, and I think Riverside can do a better job, in my opinion. So the thing about it is, I'm asking you to do that, respect the parents' rights, and to teach our children, basically, the three Rs, and nothing else. Parents, you have one set of parents, and that is all. Thank you.
Any other public comment? So we will close public comment, but I do want to turn it over to Mrs. Kalas, she wanted a few moments. Here we go.
Some of this might be a little bit repetitive of what Jim said. You'll say that one, right? Okay, um, first of all, really about this time, 26 years ago, I was here, and I was nine months pregnant with our oldest daughter, Katie, as the school board approved Jim's first contract. And as of today, I'm joined by our three adult children, Katie Claire and Zach, as we celebrate Jim's retirement. Jim's career really afforded him many different opportunities to be within the district. Riverside High School Assistant Principal, Auburn Middle School Principal, Lieutenant Auburn, Riverside High School Principal, Assistant Superintendent, and last year Superintendent. Throughout his tenure, serving the students, families, and the community at large, Jim led with enough of honesty and integrity in life. With a career span in 26 years, there were many victories, with the remaining obstacles as well. Jim weathered a fiscal crisis, a labor dispute, and a global pandemic that led to unimaginable problems, and that's really just in the review. But during each and every one of those obstacles, never once did he waver from his convictions, he used those to, culties to grow stronger as a leader. During his tenure, there are several accomplishments that were worthy of recognition, the new traffic pattern at Riverside High School, um, which I believe is named after you, um, the weight room, two new state-of-the-art elementary schools, and this turf at Riverside Stadium, and that's impressive, to say the least, and that's coming from a Sharden family, and the turf project alone, I know, is really a three-year adventure, and one that he's really proud of to this very day. Jim worked tirelessly within the community, and was invited at a certain time to speak at many small group gatherings that became known as Coffee with Kalas. A community member would host a coffee, and Jim would attend to answer questions pertaining to the bond issues that were on the ballot. With the passage of those bonds, Riverside has two new state-of-the-art schools to be very proud of, Heartside and Riverfield. Those schools will provide educational opportunities for the students in this district. Several years ago, Jim's secretary, Debbie, who's also retired this week, gifted Jim with a Sharden pullover, so that he could ditch Riverside here, as he would often need to lead a Riverside event to attend a Sharden event that one of our children were participating in. Whether volleyball or track, cheerleading drama, football or basketball, Jim always cheered for our children, and for their personal success, but deep down, they were playing a Riverside team. I think he secretly rooted for Riverside. And Riverside's winning football over Sharden last year was truly the best farewell gift he could have ever received. My family wants to thank the Riverside community as well, and you for supporting Jim throughout his career, thank you to the amazing principals, the teachers, support staff, secretaries, clerical staff, nurses, resource officers, food service professionals, custodians, the maintenance crew, bus drivers, directors, and essential office hours. Without all of you, Jim's job would have been impossible. And to the many community members who have served on this board over the years, thank you for your service too. Jim is leading this district, I think, in pretty good shape, and it's time for Dr. Rotino to take the lead. I can't say I'm going to miss the beginning, though, leaving meetings, the endless phone calls, but what I will miss is the connection, connection that Jim made with this community. I'm sure you'll see Jim around in the future, and most likely, he will be in the stands, and he will be cheering for Riverside, as was done for past years, so, congratulations.
I was very, uh, the, 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 at Sharden Square, a couple weeks ago, and I had the opportunity to, let me to, at least, project those two, and I told him, I'm going to get ready, and said, I can have like, uh, maybe like a football game now, and, and they could be away at Sharden, so, I'm going to be a little bit more vocal.
So that brings us to the consent agenda, um, for finance and audit.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda, as recommended by the treasurer, items A through J, a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to make note of the donations that we got, as we usually do, a donation of cherry, oak, maple, walnut, and sassafras lumber to the Riverside High School, where working class, from Gail Stoneheim, so thank you. Is there any discussion on any of the other items? All right, can we call the roll?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Laurie Missy.
Aye.
Lynn Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Eck.
Aye.
Motion carried. For this to consent agenda for personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda, as recommended by the superintendent, items A through H.
Second.
Any discussion on those items? All right, if none, can we call the roll?
Laurie Missy.
Aye.
Lynn Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Eck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda for curriculum and programming.
Make a motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda, as recommended by the superintendent, items A through E, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Gary Nunn, can you take the roll?
Lynn Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Eck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Laurie Missy.
Aye. Motion carried. Consent agenda for buildings, grounds, and operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda, items A through F, as recommended by the superintendent, uh, may I have a second?
A second?
I apologize, I was extra vocal, it's okay, it's not, in there.
I'm sorry.
You're good, but there's something on the agenda, there's a roll call, and I shouldn't have, uh, it'd be. It was kind of cool, uh, but, 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 you're good, it's A through, did you say A through?
I, I said A through.
You're good.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So I wish you a happy, uh, day.
All right, any, any discussion? All right, can you call the roll, please?
Who's, who's second?
Second.
I don't know, generally.
No, hold on, just a second. Please, your favor. All right, can you call the roll, please?
Tom Eck.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Laurie Missy.
Aye.
Lynn Gracy.
Aye.
Scott Fishel. Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, that brings us to board education update.
I just want this up, right, like, I'll go for gathering, well, I'll do, yes, go ahead, Gabe. It's been a super pleasure, we're good, working, having you for our superintendent the last 10 years, my time on the board, I still get to see you every single day, and our new job, your new job will be working together, but, um, so it's not goodbye for us, but it's been such a pleasure, you've done nothing but, you've always been, tell the people's points, you're so incredibly helpful, and my own family too, and I needed you, and we've been very lucky to have you.
I don't know what else to say, you'll be, oh, yeah, I wrapped it in the wrapping paper and started on this office this morning.
Um, Jim, at the end of the day, you've been.
Thank you so much for working on the levees and working on the board, it's been great, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, so, so, you know, a lot of us have been on the board for quite, quite a while, and, and so I, I think that one of the, the key things that allows a successful board and superintendent interaction is, is trust, and, and, and you were my trust from, from the get-go, I came in some, some choppy waters, and you've been a steady hand on the, on the tiller, we navigated a good course, um, we had a good relationship, we haven't always agreed, but, but we have, I think, always come down on making decisions that were in favor of Riverside, and I'll always be grateful for that, um, I, I, I've learned a lot about my, you know, being, being here on the board, it's been a great experience for me personally, and, and so interacting with you has been, has been, has been terrific, and, and, uh, I'm really proud of the legacy that, that we have all come together to, to create, and, and many of the things. come together to, to create, and, and many of the things that, Mrs. Kaelis, that you, you mentioned, that's, you know, we did, we had a lot of choppy waters, but, but in the end, what I like to use is we're lucky, and, and we are, and, and, and a lot of that luckiness come, came from you, and we, we stuck with it, and we had success, and we have opportunity, looking forward, looking forward to, to working with Dr. Rotino, but we really, we have left Riverside better than when we found it, so, thank you.
I want to give a few here to comment, too, is that, that Mr. Hatt also has lovely Claire. So, over the course of many years, we've heard, and I find it a key change with her name on it, as a question. We're aware of it, discuss that.
Nice to meet you in person.
So, I, I would add that your wife said honesty and integrity, right, Mrs. Kaelis? And so, thank you for that, thank you for your professionalism, it's so important when there's a, a big operation, this is a big corporation we're running here, and, you know, your honesty, integrity, and professionalism, I think, have really helped make it a success, so, thank you.
So, you have speeches.
If all, we, we know that sooner.
I still get to text you, like, no, don't damn jokes. So, I. So, we just wanted to give you this as a token of our appreciation from the Board of Education. Um, you, you've done so much for this district, I can't, I can't begin to tell you how much I appreciate that.
So, the years, a lot of us.
And I really didn't take that right, because it was. I can't, we'll see that later. So, I said, we're going to do it then. No, I'm going to give it away. Good, I need some.
Thank you very much. I love it, you guys, too.
Right.
Thank you very much.
You won't miss the work, but you'll miss the people.
Right, right.
We do have a cake to celebrate, Kaelis's retirement, so everybody's welcome to say and have a piece of cake, and say there goodbye, or see you later, or how you want to say it, so. That brings us to our next meeting announcement, so we have a finance and audit personnel committee meeting August tenth at eight fifteen AM, buildings and grounds operations committee meeting August fourteenth at seven thirty AM, the business meeting August seventeenth at seven PM, and a business meeting August twenty-fourth at seven PM. I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-three PM. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Plackel, can you call the roll?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lily Missy.
Aye.
Tom Hatt.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Linda Grassy.
Aye.
Motion carried.